Thank you for your help. I've, I've never done this. I've always delegated this.
All sorts of new things about Sam today. Um, okay, wonderful. Well, thank you everyone for being here. Um, present, we have supervisor Vestola, Birch Craig, Dwight Youthy, Jeremy Frame, and we have Thomas Lyon uh from Ontario County and I am Chair Caitlin McCumsky. Uh, did everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes for September? Were there any additions or corrections?
I looked at them. I didn't see anything.
Thank you. We'll mark those as approved. Um, I wanted to just quickly update you on the survey. Um, we have one hundred and seventeen responses entered already. There were four hard copies here at Town Hall. I will get entered. Um, so we're just over a hundred and twenty responses so far. Uh, eighty-one people have joined our mailing list. Supervisor Vestola, which I think is awesome.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, so offline, we should chat a little bit about maybe some using that sending out town board meeting agendas, or I know you have the county road thirty-six meeting.
Hearing next week. Yeah.
Yep.
So that'd be a good first one to see. Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I can walk you through that. I'll set up some templates. So basically you open it and just fill in the info. Um, so.
Nine o'clock tonight, though. That's it. I got it. Nine o'clock. It's a.
We'll be long gone. Um, so the surveys have stayed really uh steady coming in, which I think is great. I was uh concerned we may get like a big rush when the postcard went out and then it would fall off and uh so far we haven't seen that happen. Uh, we still are planning to do a second postcard mailing as part of our public meetings. Um, and if we do decide that we want to extend the survey deadline, um, we should be able to go into the.
What was our deadline that we've?
October thirty-first was two months. Um, so I guess that was one question I had for you, Thomas. Um, what percentage do we consider a um like representative sample as far as surveys go?
You know, it, it really depends on, on, you know, I would say kind of a minimum, you'd want to get um, you know, kind of the, the one in ten sort of thing. Um, but you know, you, if you can't force people to, to fill it out, so the more the better, but ideally you'd want to get, you know, at least you know, a tenth of your population. Um, so, yeah.
Perfect. We're just over ten percent right now. So.
So we'll shoot for three hundred.
That would be wonderful. Um, okay, so we'll go ahead and start on agenda item number three. Um, planning for our public engagement meeting and our public hearing. Um, we had originally talked about doing them October, November. Uh, there just really wasn't enough time to pull all the details together. Um, and I know a lot of us have chatted about this before and Thomas, I think we chatted a little bit about it um when we met with Linda. Uh, Linda Phillips from the county when we, before we started this process, uh, her and I had a chat about it. And one of the um really good pieces of advice, I think, that she gave was that the comprehensive planning process isn't necessarily just about updating your plan. Um, our plan is pretty well-written. Um, I think we have minimal updates, just kind of things here and there, our maps, obviously, and um some things about our water depart- or our water system. But overall, it's not a major overhaul that we need to do. Um, but another really important part of the process is the public engagement piece and really um, you know, we see this, I think, on, you know, who attends town board meetings, who runs for positions on town board, who's sitting on our planning boards and our zoning boards. Um, you know, we see that population aging and then when I look around the room, I'm usually one of the youngest people in the room. So this can also be a great opportunity to engage with our residents and get people more involved and um participating in local government. So when we start talking about the public meetings, um, I didn't want to like rush into them and do, you know, kind of a half job on them. I wanted to make sure that we had enough time to plan them appropriately and, and make something that was worthwhile. Um, so with that said, um, I'm open to discussing dates if we think we are ready to roll for November. Um, our next meeting would be November fourteenth. Um, so I guess we'll kind of chat with Thomas a little bit more and talk about the format and you know, if there's things that need to be done ahead of time. Um, we'll have to make sure we have enough time to get the postcard out. Um, and if we aren't ready to go for November, which is a month from now, I would suggest waiting until January.
So what is it we would do at this first meeting?
So the first meeting is going to be the public engagement meeting. So that's going to be more of an open house sort of interactive format, and that's really um, what I'm hoping Thomas can kind of chat with us about. Um, what, some ideas for how that would work and what that would look like.
Uh, so, yeah, uh, I definitely agree with uh my colleague Linda about uh public engagement, but I, I, I think you also touched on uh public education a little bit. So, you know, I was, I was imagining how, how it often runs is sort of a just overview of, you know, what is a comp plan? What are the components uh that are going on? Just to uh sort of frame, you know, what uh what, you know, so that once it's kind of brought into it more of an open house, um, can kind of frame the discussion a little bit more. Um, and it also just, you know, again, with trying to get people involved uh in the future, knowing who's responsible for what and, you know, what all is involved. Um, so kind of an overview. Uh, I did send you information uh or tried to connect you with uh Kyle. I don't know if you've had a conversation, uh but you know, probably going through some, some of that kind of general mapping of the area to kind of frame uh frame it all. Uh, and then, you know, after that, you know, I, I, I don't know that you necessarily want it to be uh wide open, just free-for-all. To, I, you know, guess it kind of depends on who all's there, but you could kind of break it down into different work areas and people could come and comment about, you know, the different components of the plan. You know, and, you know, kind of what what they like about things, what they, they would like to see changed, and really kind of just, you know, I, unfortunately, I don't think I've seen the survey and all. That's really on me. I, I need to look up the survey to really see what information you were drawing from people, but that also could frame, you know, if you're seeing that there's a lot of responses related to a particular topic, maybe that's something that we don't need to cover, but if there's, you know, it's unclear, we can focus on that, but I'd, I'd probably recommend kind of doing breakout uh sessions a little bit more.
Okay.
Um, but that's, that's from an outside perspective, you know, I, I don't know your thoughts where you'd focus, but.
So I have one thought is I would like to see the number two, the existing conditions, which we went over last time, but I wasn't here and I don't know what edits have been made or anything like that. I think it would be good to have that section you know, flushed out as much as we want it and then allow people to comment on that to see. I mean, it gives them something tangible. Here's what we've done so far. We, you know, made these edits and this is the beginning of our existing conditions. And then hopefully have some survey results, be able to give people an idea of what other people are saying and then get input on the different parts that we've done so far. And maybe, yeah, have some maps up that people can look at. Um, but to give people to have a fair amount of information, don't make it like a charrette where people come in and give their different ideas and, I mean, because we're going to have a lot of work already done, we should have it out there for them. Not that it has, that we're fixed in what we've written, but.
Mm-hmm.
Well, this meeting will be after the thirty-first where all the input should already be in, correct, with the survey.
Unless we want to extend the survey.
And I think our meeting should be probably push it to January because December, November is kind of quick to pull stuff together.
The first meeting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I, as we're chatting about it, I think that to really do these these pieces justice, to update our maps and potentially have some of those available to view to have, to look at the survey and find, you know, topics that we may want to address further. Um, to have the, you know, existing conditions kind of updated. I think that that's, these are all pieces that are not something we pulled together in a week or two. They're going to take a little time.
Supposedly engagement, we're getting feedback, I would guess, at this point.
Yes.
And then the hearing would be very basically a final.
So as part of the adoption of a comprehensive plan, you need to do two public hearings. So the intention of the first one is to still be able to get feedback instead of doing two when it's done and people you know, are, we're just saying here it's done. The first one is really to still get uh additional feedback um and kind of update the town board about what our progress is. And then the final one is really, the second one is really us presenting the final plan. Uh, that's ready for adoption. So that'll be our very last step.
And that might be in February or.
That's funny, Dwight.
It wasn't meant to be.
Um, no, I mean, realistically, we're looking at spring, at the very earliest. Um, but I think probably summer is more real.
About adoption?
Yeah.
Yeah, within my term.
I told you, we'll have it done before your terms through December, right? Just in case we get bogged down somewhere.
One more year. Uh, I have a question. Is it marked where someone fills out that survey? They can only do it once, or could someone fill up surveys?
There's no capability to do that. Somebody could fill out.
Because we have the free, okay.
Yeah.
So we don't know. So, um, then gathering those unique identifiers for the mailer, if you will, from our info@canadeseveryork.gov, we have eighty unique email addresses roughly.
So not everybody who takes the survey decide, there's a checkbox at the top. So some people just take the survey, but surprisingly, three-quarters of them.
When I did it, I did put my email pretty sure.
Yep.
And we have no disclaimer of when you provide the email that we will not use it for different. There's no privacy guarantee with the email. I just say, I would hope that it's not used for political purposes, actually.
Uh, no, I, I think that that would go uh without being said, but I understand that concern.
If you don't say it.
We do say that you can unsubscribe at any time.
So any emails we send out or that are sent out, there will be an unsubscribe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And maybe that's something, um, we, you know, put together sort of a welcome email and we can, we can.
We might even work together with Jeremy. So once, once we hit that road closure just the other day, I saw it on Facebook. It looked great and it's going to be a one-lane closure until the school boss is run, then it's closed. We can put that out to residents and, and test to see how well that's received as well. That's a way to get eighty people real quick.
Yep. And I have noticed
Road closure.
In the preliminary survey results, most people say email is the best way for the town to communicate with them.
I don't disagree.
So.
Um, I do have something I just want to communicate for this meeting. I don't know if it's out of order or not, but I'm recording another state of towns where we're at now. Recording that on the twenty-first, so, or twenty-fourth, rather, and with edits, sometimes it takes a week or ten days to edit. I can put, I'm going to talk about the complaint. Anything you want me to say, I'm more than happy to do that. And that'll be recorded with a clickable link, just like the past one. And that does talk about the complaint and it's ongoing and want your input.
Okay.
And participate, and you can put a tagline on there. Contact X, the participant.
Well, we gotta, we can do a separate bulletin board, if you will. Um, in, in, Finger Lakes TV has already said to me, they're totally fine with us uh putting something up specifically for the complaint, a little crawler, rotator, whatever we want.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, if you just want to give me a contact person, then I can get it in a format.
Her name's Lenore Friend.
Okay, I know.
Yeah. Start today.
Perfect. Uh, yeah, I'll touch base with the Lenore because it would be great to advertise the public meetings.
It's their charge.
Whatever the second postcard is, we can maybe just space it.
And it's partly our relationship with the town. We budget money to, that goes to that. It's actually only two hundred and fifty dollars and it's a great service.
I think too, I'm going to put a note here. Um, you know, it would be nice when we're doing the interactive format to have something on the TV. Maybe we play the state of the town on the TV while, you know, it's kind of like a station. If people want to stop and, and listen to it, we could kind of potentially, how long will it be?
Well, the, it's going to be six, seven, eight minutes depending on uh the photo. So we did another day of caring and we had more photos this year. They had more students and faculty than last year. Uh, and I have more shots of the highway and even the uh borings that we took on County Road Thirty-Six in Jersey Hill. Got pictures.
So we're looking at probably January. Do we want to make a target date of January?
For the meeting, for the first meeting?
I'm almost thinking February seems more appropriate.
And you want to come up with the list of things that we need?
Yeah.
We can do?
Yes. Um, sorry, I just want to get this down before I forget. Let's get it up. Okay. Um, yeah, so let's chat a little bit more. Um, Thomas, what are good ways to get feedback? Um, like, should people fill something out? I know sometimes you do things with like, people put dots on things.
Well, so what I often, um, what often happens is the dots, but then also uh having just basically post-it notes. So if someone, you know, if you're talking about, you know, existing conditions as an example, you know, if someone just says, yeah, that's, that's correct, they can put a dot, but if, you know, they want to change something or they you know, want to expand on something, just having some post-it notes to, to kind of add and you can fill up the board that way. Um, you know, I, I think that that's probably a little bit better than um having, you know, a note taker right there. Um, can kind of bog things down, people can do on their own, but having yourself, having me, uh, you know, perhaps the, the supervisor, your you know, members of the committee to kind of talk about, you know, answer questions or, or dig in. Uh, but really having those, those post-its and little dots to kind of highlight, you know, where there's maybe a focus area or, you know, a write-on uh sort of thing. Um, you know, and usually, uh, a lot of times, uh, it's different colors. So, you know, a green is go, you know, things like that. So having a few different colors of, of dots. Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Yeah.
Being very optimistic.
Hmm.
This room is not large enough for that.
That could be. Could be an issue. Um, you know, do you have a, a, a larger meeting space that you can easily get access to?
Uh, I think you're being really optimistic about how many people are going to come.
I'm just asking the question.
I mean, we could potentially like set up a station in the conference room here, right?
Yeah.
Uh.
It would go down the hallway too. Yeah.
I, I, I wouldn't say. We, we, we got fifty people in here. I'd be delighted.
I would be through the roof if we got fifty people in here.
Right. I, I, I didn't want to say that on a recorded line, but yes. We can take fifty.
Yep.
It's official.
Uh, so, yeah, I think if we're, you know, we arrange things, I think we should have enough space in here.
Okay.
Um, maybe just kind of have things go around the outside of the room.
And again, if you're setting up stations, so people would come and go.
Yep.
Would come, once somebody might come early, you have fifty minutes. Say, wow, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's why I like the idea of the open house format for the meeting is people can stay as long as they want. They can come and go. They don't have to get here right at a certain time. Um, so I was thinking we'll probably pick a, a two-hour timeframe, six to eight or something like that. Um, and people can come and go. I think also the stations have the benefit of, um, not everybody's comfortable like standing up and, you know, if we did just like a presentation, not everybody's comfortable standing up and voicing their opinion and other, in front of other people. So they may want to like chat with us one-on-one or like Thomas said, they might want to just write a note on a post-it and leave it for us. So it really gives people an opportunity to engage at the, the level that they're comfortable with.
So would some of that be put on the mailing? That they go out and when would the mailing go out? February.
Um, I would think a, a couple of weeks ahead of time.
Just a few weeks.
We may have different opinions about the correct amount of time, but I, I would say two to four weeks ahead of time.
January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we had first quarter word. In initially, we had talked about a second mailing to remind people of the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Is that dead?
Uh, I mean, what are the thoughts on it's just extending the deadline of the surveys? If we're pushing the the public meeting, what are everybody's thoughts about?
Well, if you want more people to do the survey, a reminder would be good because I know I had to remind someone in our house to fill it out. And I think if I hadn't, the postcard had disappeared a while ago.
Yep. Yep.
But I think if you had ten percent, you said over ten percent right now.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's pretty good.
What's the mailing cost us?
Um, I think it was about twelve hundred dollars. So we've.
And we were done.
Yep. Um, and Kate probably had a great idea too about um posting something um on election day in Town Hall so that when people come in, uh, they can see that the survey is open. What are your thoughts about?
Pretty sure we can. I would, I would check with the Board of Elections just to be certain.
Okay.
With both the Republican and Democrat.
Mm-hmm.
Just to be certain.
Okay.
Well, I think we could, we could put a poster up now that's there. We don't, you know, the other thing to do is just maybe have.
No, I agree.
If we come up with a flyer that sits at Eileen's desk.
Mm-hmm.
You know, someone comes in to talk to her or talks to.
Yeah, she's got a pile of postcards there.
Of the survey?
Yeah, so the, I, we printed ex, we printed extra blank postcards for both her to have there and uh for Supervisor Vestola to have so that, uh, if people.
Handing them out or can we bribe her?
I think they're right out on the counter.
Yeah, but counter is different than.
And, and she, she has a pile of these as well.
You do try to engage people in the company.
Okay, I think.
So nobody is opposed to extending the deadline for the survey.
Do we have a budget for another, enough in the budget for another postcard?
Yeah, I think I budgeted, um, we get the budget pulled out. I think I also budgeted for another mailing for yes, we have enough technically to do a mailing, a second mailing for twenty twenty-four, and I budgeted for one mailing for twenty twenty-five.
Well, there'd probably be two mailings for twenty twenty-five with the two meetings, two different meetings.
We'll put all the meetings on one postcard. I would like to do the public engagement meeting at one of our regularly scheduled meetings because hopefully we've all got this blocked in our calendar and then the public hearing at the following town board meeting. Because the public hearing has to be.
So I would suggest that if we have the budget, we send the second postcard and extend the deadline for the survey to the end of November.
But you're not going to send it out to people who already responded.
No, you, well, you don't know with those.
We don't know.
Right, so.
Just send out to everyone.
What, what month would you like to coincide with the town board meeting?
Uh, potentially March. Tentatively, we're talking February and March.
Okay, good. So the usually they're on the second Monday of every month, but April will be the first. Just looking out to.
Okay, that's good to know. And I know January, February sometimes get, you have the organizational and then closing the bills, so we don't want to um get in the middle of that.
Where's your time for?
I don't know if we can extend the date.
Of the survey? Why? So. I mean, I'd see the survey as.
Okay, no, we can. Uh, because I manually close it. That's right.
So I just see the survey is really our biggest component.
But what makes you, what makes you think sending out a second one? Do the people having responded to the first one are going to respond to the second request?
I don't know if they are or not.
I doubt it.
Well, but we don't know if we don't try and if we can get another ten percent.
You're not going to get another ten percent.
You want to bet on it?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I think there's value, even if we got another five percent, that's you know, how many people looked at that and said, oh, yeah, that sounds cool. I'll do that. It got tossed in the pile.
Got to put some other things by.
Yeah.
First mailer come out.
Uh, right after Labor Day? When did it come out?
It is different nowadays, making sure somebody tells free time for hungry.
Yeah, people are home. Yeah, it was.
And we want to send it out after the first week of November.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of stuff people are getting with it.
That's a really good point. We don't want to get lost. Yeah.
File that, we file that. Yeah. Good point.
Yeah, that's a great point. Um.
We can use the same format just.
Yeah, and we'll say deadline extended.
Or if you forget.
Or.
Yeah, or.
Well, I, I, I would say, um, as far as Caitlin was saying, uh, that sort of excited, we're extending it sort of thing. Um, you know, so for, on some of our own uh county projects, we've done that extension and it's, you know, there's been such a great resp, you know, overwhelming response. We want to provide an opportunity for your voice to be heard. So, you know, I, I defer to your, your knowledge on that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Stay as overly pos- uh, positive as possible. Yep. Okay, so, um, let's just quick chat a little bit about the public hearing while we have Thomas here. So, um, the public hearing, obviously, we're going to be doing that in conjunction with a town board meeting, so we want to keep that uh fairly brief. Um, so is that typically just like a brief overview of where the process is at?
So as far as that, if you're doing the kind of public hearing for the board, then it that would be usually when you kind of present, this is what we have for them to kind of look at. Um, you know, the way you, you made it sound was kind of, here's where we're at. You know, I, I think this is more, you know, you are proposing. You know, the way you you made it sound was kind of, here's where we're at. You know, I think this is more, you know, you are proposing this as. For for adoption. Um. But, you know, if if you. Would really defer to them more on that. That's, you know, your call.
No, but we have to do the two meetings, right?
Right.
So the fir- so you're saying we should do. The first meeting when the plan is substantially complete?
I I I apologize. I thought you were.
Oh.
Yes, no, I. Uh, yes, so that that first one is sort of, you know, once you have kind of the existing conditions and everything like that, sort of, this is what. You know, the responses you've gotten back, you know, it is a staas report, that one right immediately from the public hearing.
Okay.
When we have.
A question. We have two public hearings. We have the first public hearing with. The board. Of, you know, the. Regular town board. It's and and people voice, we get. Input. That. We need to make, we think we should make changes. We as a committee. Wanna make a few changes. Can. Then you have to have still two public hearings, or the second one can just be a reflection of those changes and here. I mean, how much leeway do you get? In the public hearing? The first public hearing to change something for the second public hearing.
Uh, so it is, it is very much kind of the latter part of what you were saying was, you know, sort of, this is what we have, we're recommending these things, or we're thinking about these things, or this is an area that we will focus on. Uh, and kind of set out that that milestone, or not milestone, but kind of the. What you're going to be working on to get it to completion. Um. And then. The second public hearing will be. It's done, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Um, let me just pull up the agenda quick. And does anybody have any last questions about the public engagement meeting or the public hearing?
Public engagement is February.
Tentatively, yeah.
Tentatively. And then the next one would be down the road, spring or.
So we're looking at public engagement, tentatively, February, the second Thursday in February. Public hearing number one, tentatively, the town board meeting in March.
March ten.
And. The second public hearing will really be determined when we feel like the plan is ready for adoption.
So we're talking about three meetings now?
Yes, so we have to do the public engagement is the open house with stations. That's gonna be at our meeting and we have to have two public hearings.
Got it.
One while we're in progress and one when we're done.
Okay.
That's our last step for adoption.
All right.
And that last one will be. I would love to say spring or summer, but that's really gonna depend on when we feel like the plan is done.
Right.
And we are ready to submit it for adoption.
So what do we want the county to do before the February meeting? We wanna update maps? I mean, do we have a list of things that?
Yeah, them updating the maps. Um, and we also, Thomas, we wanna make sure that we can use as many of those forty. Uh, hours of technical assistance that we get to. Um, I know it's probably hard to say without knowing exactly how much map updating that we have. Um. But from the contract and kind of chatting with you, it seemed like. Most of that time would be used up with mapping and then the the couple of meetings we've had.
I it. Certainly, Kyle's time would be a a big chunk of that. Um, but, you know, if if there's still some space, we can try to, you know. Meetings not until February, but there can be some, you know, work towards getting it prepared still in twenty twenty-four. Uh, to kinda, because you're doing the. Actual meeting and then you had also in the contract talked about us helping with uh, sort of the secret and things like that. Um, so to try to. Make sure that we stay within those forty hours. Um, I really, you know, once, once Kyle's gotten dug in. We can then figure out, you know, kinda backtrack what what additional. We can do, but. You know, shouldn't shouldn't take them all forty hours. Is I guess.
Okay.
I think he's been working on maps since uh, last year. I hate it.
Yeah. So it's really, you know, it may just be a matter of uh, making sure that. You know, he's got in the right format for you and, you know, maybe a few others, uh, specific. I know he's been working with Dr. Bruce quite a bit on that.
Um, okay. So, um, I think that sort of. I need to let some of this marinate a little bit. Is there anything that we've talked about? That is jumping out at anybody that they're like. Does anybody really wanna start looking at the maps and working with Kyle or, uh? Or is there any part of this planning that anybody is like, that sounds awesome? I wanna work on that.
I'll, I mean, actually work. With someone on maps.
Okay.
Um, and given. That. I suggest that we. Um. In the. Introduction of the, you know. What is it? I don't. Existing conditions.
Yep.
Suggesting that we. Go back farther geologically, maybe some geological map. Of the area. And then also I suggested adding the indigenous peoples.
Yep.
So maybe a map of how the indigenous people. Occupied the area of Canada's or, and I think that. Information is available.
Okay.
Um, so a map of that too.
Okay.
How far back are you going?
Uh, four hundred million years, five hundred million years. Well, it's interesting. Everyone. You know, and I apologize for not being here last time, but everyone looks at our area and says, oh, the glaciers formed it. Yeah, they did, but there was something before the glaciers. And it's actually very interesting cuz we were actually a sea and one on a shallow sea at one time. And, you know, it's part of. The geology of the area, so.
Yeah, Burch had some really uh, great additions and I apologize. I have not gotten you a red line version uh, with the updates we made. Um, so that that's gonna be my homework. Um, before our next meeting, I will get you a red line version. Of the first two sections that we've reviewed so far. Um, I know Burch, you already sent me your your updates. Um.
And I cheated. I used ChatGPT. For my geology. And some of the indigenous people.
So.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
So now, though, I know the county has a policy that if A AI is used to create any documents, we have to note that on the document. Is that something we should?
Deep or do totally down that road? Yes, Boston.
Okay.
I'm not. I was using that as a guide. I do think it needs to be fact-checked and I will reapply it.
Finger Lakes Museum has some information on uh, the indigenous peoples with the finger lakes.
Well, so does Kananda Gonzo, so, I mean, if we want that. I think. I can pull that information.
Okay, awesome. Uh, I would appreciate that. So you're gonna work on that. I'm gonna work on the red line version.
What am I gonna work on?
The mapping.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
The entire con plant, we said how came advice came to get its name. I don't remember seeing that. It would be a great thing to get on a conflict. It came from it.
Yeah, that would be a great thing to add to that section. Great addition.
Our historian can help us on this?
Yeah.
Do we have an historian for Canada's that can help us or write?
We still have.
Yes, yes, you could actually email her.
And that, and she can write the introduction of how Canada's was formed?
That would be wonderful. But we're also, um, I imagine I'm posting that looking for assistance.
Well, I'm. Just asking, is that, are those? Is that information available?
Been the spoke of that position.
Who's the historian now? Used to be Joe Bond.
Yes, uh. He stepped in about a year and. Four months ago.
Yeah.
Can you send me her email, please?
Historian.
Well, okay.
I'm trying to get her using.
Okay.
Can you send me her email?
What?
Or else send my email to her and ask her to contact me.
See if I can copy both of them.
Okay. Um, so I'll work on the red line version, um. And I.
I think we're done with Thomas, right?
Uh, yes, I think we are all set with you, Thomas. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I really appreciate your input.
Yep, you're welcome and certainly we can keep talking and we'll.
Yep, well, we'll definitely, um, do you want us to see to you on the correspondence with Kyle or do you want us just to work directly with him?
Uh, if you would, uh, just, you know, cuz ultimately I'm gonna be tracking the time for us, so.
Sure.
Very good.
We'll get that ball rolling. Thanks again. Have a great evening. Um, and then I'll sort of.
Is Kyle have a last name?
Ritz. R I T T S.
Oh, he does the, uh, he's on this. Uh, planning. He does the planning stuff.
Yep. Uh. And then I'll also organize. These notes that I took tonight and sort of come up with a plan how. We. Set our goals and achieve them for the public engagement meeting. Does that make?
And we've got a postcard ready?
Yes.
And plan on what's the second?
The second, um. Thursday in November is the fourteenth.
Right, I'm thinking we should send the postcard. On the week of the tenth, November. And we're gonna, and that gives people. Cause if it's sent. And say Friday, I mean, how do they, you can send it on Friday, the eighth.
Mm-hmm.
And people will get it and then they'll have three weeks. To fill it out. Do the survey and then we're done.
I I think you really gotta specify that if you already have filled it out. Because we don't know who filled it out. And they could be, you you get double dipped here.
Mm-hmm.
The people who already filled it out and they're gonna fill it out again. This place, so please do, if you're already done survey, thank you very much. Ignore this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be. It's just.
Yeah, we can definitely, um.
Take things.
Think about how we wanna phrase that for her. I I am not overly concerned that.
Doubled up.
People are gonna be so excited to.
Thought about it, but I think.
Uh. But I do appre- I do appreciate that concern and I think we can say. Something. Thoughtfully positive about, please don't take it. Um. So.
I think I have a Canada's student, but I think. Could reach out more to young people. Hear what they have to say about. Something we did that, I say we, I helped. I participated a little bit in the Richmond Con Plant and doing our con plant.
Mm-hmm.
And I brought, I think I told the story and I brought a kid who was having difficulties in school and. When he sat at a table like this and word members were very interested in his.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Never saw, I'm so excited, so.
Do you have?
Just happened to be out there.
Oh.
I haven't seen him.
Do you have a contact? I wonder, um, can you connect to me with like the government teacher at the school? Maybe kids can get extra credit or something?
High school government.
Yeah. Is it? Okay.
Actually, he was here for the day of caring for the second year. He knows you.
Okay. And cuz I know that's something you've been chatting about, wanting to make sure that we engage with young people and I agree that that's definitely a demographic that. Uh, we have to get a little bit creative about. Um, okay, any last minute thoughts, questions? Again, our next meeting will be November fourteen. All right, um. You need to stop the recording.
I could die, so I gotta hold my hands off this.
Okay.